Good evening. My name is Eric Lynch and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. Today is Wednesday, February 12. Time is 6:34 PM. Will everyone please stand as I declare the meeting?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call. The members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting, please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lynch from here. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, professional engineer. Ben Saviya, Secretary.
Here.
Paul Fernandez. Not here today. And then Mark Zamary. Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator. And Andrew Brotman, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Please note that this is, this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicant to keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent conferences. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro in opposition or of general nature made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetland related matters. Other applications that do not involve public hearing will follow similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we'd like to add an item to the agenda you have in front of you.
IWC 2025-2. That's going in section A. Right?
In section A, yep.
Move that to acceptance. So we need a motion.
Motion to add that to the agenda.
We have a.
Is there?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. I don't know if I have a copy.
Which is it?
It's a full copy.
It was in front of you. It was in front of you when you sat down.
Right. We'll find it. What's the, what's your? Okay.
It's a 46 Huntingtown Road.
Oh, yeah, I got that.
Okay. At this time, general public participation. Is there anybody in chambers who'd like to speak in a general nature about anything not on our agenda? Chambers, anybody online? Do we have anybody online? Just us. Just us. All right. Moving on to regulated activities. IWC 2025-1, file number 15181314 Monroe Turnpike. 13 lot, single-family residential cluster development. New road drainage facilities.
Is that James?
I know. This is George. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
So you're on.
Okay. This is the first time I used it, so just checking.
Just hang in there, George.
Yeah, we'll get to you. Board's I S T LLC, applicant Jay Edwards and Associates LLC, representing. Okay.
So, uh, this project that's in front of you, that it was recent, recently in front of planning and zoning for a zone change from an RF2 to an RR zone, recreational and residential. It was declined by planning and zoning. But it was noted that there was significant public interest in this project. And the applicant's going to be coming to the commission for a favorable referral for a cluster subdivision with some modifications that they had made from the previous submittal in planning and zoning.
Can you clarify, can you clarify then? So it was a two acre, zone two acres?
It is still zone two acres. Yep.
And they want to go to one acre?
No. Uh, it would still be zoned as, uh, it would still be zoned as a two acre. They're, they will be asking to apply the rules of a cluster subdivision.
Which means that they could be.
Less than the two acres.
Okay. And I assume there are wetlands on there, which is why it's being put before us?
Oh, yeah. There are wetlands on there. None of the development is actually in wetlands. It's proposed. But there are some lots that come very close to wetlands that is regulated activity in the upland review areas.
I assume they're not present at the moment because they are expecting us to.
They're expecting tonight just to decide whether it was a public or a regular hearing, and then they will present their project.
Well, I, I, me personally, I think just because of the nature of the application that it's probably.
Can I move to make a public here?
You can, but don't we have to have a specific reason for the public?
Yes, it needs to be either a public interest, significant impact, or petition.
Well, there's a lot of wetlands on here and a lot of, like you said, upper review area disturbance. So I think that the fact that there is so many homes in this subdivision, I think it should be a public hearing.
We can make a motion, but with the specific reason why. Public interest.
And, and like I said, with the last go around in planning and zoning, there was a lot of public interest.
Okay, so public interest is. And potential impact for the wetlands.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to make this a public hearing based on public interest and the significant impact to, what? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You made the motion?
Commissioner Smith.
And before we move on, I would think a, I did take a look at the drawings, but a site visit is totally appropriate for this, to get a lay of this land here. I was trying to figure it out. It's a little tough because the drawing's small, but this is better in color.
We certainly can discuss that with the applicant here.
Okay. I didn't know if it was not. I just don't, you know, just.
And also, because I just don't want it to come up later in the application, is the commission should decide properly whether they're going to require an outside professional. I don't think it's necessary, but it's not fair to the applicant to do it when things have started.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, are there any specifics that you would like before the public hearing?
Well, so, I think in just the order of things, I think it would be valuable to walk the site before making the determination if there was a need for a third party review, right?
I will get, I will get in touch with, I will email the applicant and try to set up a site visit for whoever, whatever commissioners want to do a site visit.
Can't have a site visit until you open the.
Yeah, we're.
Right. Right, right, right.
You think, I mean, Commissioner Smith, Stewart, do you agree with that? Like I, I don't want to just say we don't need one and then find that there is some relevant.
Well, I.
I don't think we need to decide either way until we hear what the applicant.
No, I understand that, but if you, if you definitely want one, I would decide now. If you may want one, then you wait, but you know what I mean? It's just. I'm with time to decide if you definitely look at it and go, oh my God, we need one. You're pretty sure about that, then I think I would, I would tell them.
So in.
Right away, because it's a, it's a, it's a month and a half process to get things going. And you don't have, you don't have a long public hearing process if they've got their ducks in a row.
I was thinking the same thing as Commissioner Kelly that, you know, if we could get a lay of the land, we could figure that out, but whatever, however it has to happen.
All right, so in the notice, in the notice to the applicant, I will let them know that the commissioners expressed an interest in a site visit once the public hearing has opened.
And perhaps they can come better prepared with a lot more pictures. Maybe we won't have to do a site visit, but in anticipation of it, maybe they could be, you know, prepared to show us what the concerns are and maybe prevent us from having to go out there.
Does the borough or does the town have a drone or something?
Uh, not, not in-house.
Cops don't have one?
I'm sure they do at this point.
All the cops.
I mean, I know, I know our town.
Cops, we ask them, they look for any reason to fly that thing. And you say, hey, do you mind flying this around this property? They go, oh, yeah, absolutely. Let's do it. I go out and they fly it around and it's unbelievable.
I heard a rumor years ago that Park and Rec had a drone, that they weren't, like they couldn't get approval for the fuel or the charger needs something. And so they ended up having to sell it. Maybe, maybe they sold it to the highway department.
This is James DeMayo, town engineer. As a licensed FAA drone pilot, I would love for us to have a drone, but we.
Oh.
Well, in any event, let's, let's, let's proactively inform our applicant that there's obviously some significant concern. As it stands right now, we're probably going to want to walk through unless they can.
Present.
Present something, video, pictures, whatever to help alleviate some of the concerns, but, you know.
Okay.
Looks like that's where it's going to end up.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
We move on from that then?
Is that?
Moving on from that?
Yes, moving on from that.
Can we move on from that? Are we very good with that?
Move on.
I did, maybe James is on the line, but he did note that the alternatives, two alternatives are supposed to be feasible and prudent and causing less or no environmental impact to it. So the alternatives that they gave us were for more houses and for more disturbance of the wetlands. So I, I'm just noting that I would really prefer better reasonable alternatives that are feasible, according to the documentation of the state.
I will add that to the notice to the applicant. That the commissioners are not satisfied with the feasible and prudent alternatives.
So moving on to IWC 2025-02. That is the file number 1522, Dusky Pond Repairing Dusky Pond Dam Due to Flooding Event of August 2024. Town of Monroe applicant James DeMayo, town engineer, representing.
And James DeMayo, our town engineer is here to present the project.
Yeah, Andrew, are you able to either allow me to share or make me a co-host or? I'm not currently able to share.
Uh, share. Yep.
No, I need to be able to share from my, my screen. I, I think you may need to make me a co-host. Or a host. And then I can always pass it back to you after.
I'm inviting you.
You may have to go to participants, click my name. Or there's dots next to my name. If you cursor over it, you might be able to say make me host or.
Over there. Over there is make a host there.
Yeah.
Make your host.
Yep. Okay, there we go. Okay. So let's just do our touchscreen screen. Okay, so again, James DeMayo, town engineer. Um, Dusky Pond, we've talked about this in the past. I've kind of tried to give you guys a little bit of heads up that I've been working towards it. I've been, uh, deep battling and going through deep in Army Corps of Engineers to gain approval to do this. And even though it's, and I've gotten authorization as an emergency repair from deep in Army Corps. But just to give you guys a little bit more insight on where it is. So it's, it's off a Hunting, Huntingtown Road. This is the Newtown border. Sorry. The, the dam itself is right here underneath my cursor. So there was an earthen berm dam that was right there. This was the Beaver Dam, which the beavers might actually be back unfortunately, but that's another conversation. But yeah, so the earthen berm, so during that storm, I don't know if any of you have seen it, it completely ravaged this area. So this used to be the stream bed elevation, right where my cursor is off to the side. This is all erosion now. Up here, this was the stream bed elevation way up here. It's now six feet lower. And you can just see right where it just blew through the entire dam. So my current proposal, yeah, these are just a couple of other pictures I took the aftermath down, downstream too. So it just kind of took material and just beat, beat up this, this entire area. Actually, this is a good shot from down below. So obviously it's just gone now, not really doing much, much of anything. The, the plan is to basically just, all it was, was a spillway. So I'm basically going to reconstruct the berm. You do everything at a three to one slope and then reconstruct the, the overflow weir. And coat it with riprap and everything else. Unfortunately, now because of the, the lower elevation of the stream bed from the erosion, it does have to branch out a little bit further than, than I would have liked, but again, I want to create a nice, stable berm. So I mean, even just the, the area is like almost, you know, 1,800 square feet of disturbance all in this little water course. We're going to have to do a bypass while the, the earthen dam is being filled in and constructed. So we're going to have to kind of install that, dam it up so that water goes around. I know right now, deep in Army Corps, and this doesn't matter for your timelines, but I'm just giving you guys all the information. Their permit, a lot, they basically gave me 120 days from, uh, what was it, the seventh? So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get this moving relatively quick, finding the funding. I just met with FEMA out there today, representatives from FEMA to, from the, because again, a lot of this was caused from the storm, so we're trying to get reimbursement that way. Got a lot of wheels turning at this point. But, but that's the project. That's what we're doing. We're trying to reconstruct the dam because the longer we wait, the, the, you know, the more wetlands that we lose upstream of that. Because now that water elevation is two feet lower than where it should be. So I'm trying to put it back to historic elevations and this way we can reestablish those wetlands.
Can you go back to the picture and show us where the berm will be placed?
Yep.
Placing.
So, so basically here to here, this used to be solid dirt in here, and that's what we're doing. We're refilling this in with material. So we're going to import a bunch of clean material in and then over the top, so it's going to have a three to one slope on the inside of, of this pond area and outside. And then we're going to cover all that sloped area with riprap. Uh, well, we're going to put a geotextile fabric there first and then, then put the riprap. So we're going to have a foot of 12 inch minus riprap coating the entire area. So that this way hopefully we don't have this problem again.
Yeah, James, I've visited a couple of times. I know what you're talking about, but I'm asking for the overhead map, you know, your drone view.
Hang on, let me see here. Make sure I share the right thing.
No, I'm talking about. He's got it. He's just. It's, it's going to be downstream of the.
Yep. So, so this is the main pond.
Yep.
Here. This is, this is the Beaver Dam.
Yep, I know that.
There used to be this little pond here.
Right. It was a couple of feet lower, right? And so where are you putting the berm?
Right here. We're putting it back right here.
Okay.
And you could even see the path of the water coming right here.
And the residents, specifically the one at 70, 70 Huntingtown Road, he's been, he's been consulted. Does he know what's going on or?
Yeah, he, he's been, I've talked to him. I haven't talked to him since I've gotten this updated news, but he's known, he's known of the plan. I've told him, yeah, him and I have discussed the plan at multiple times, even right after it happened.
Right. And I'm talking about right to that house right there.
Yeah, yeah, this house right here.
There's, there's the path that the overflow or not the overflow, the bypass is going to have to go on his property or?
No, nope.
Oh, where's the bypass? On the other side?
Yep, it's good. So, so the, right here where my cursor is, is right. All right. So that, that little mark is where the dam is going to go. The bypass is going to kind of come around this way.
Right.
And then. So, so we're nowhere near, nowhere near any property lines or anything like that. And again, it's, it's just a temporary bypass while, while we're constructing this and then it's going to get pulled out as we work our way back out.
You got to dig it in the ground, I assume?
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, yeah, we're kind of stuck on that one. Yeah. Yeah.
How about the, so you don't, you're, are you going to have, do you think you have a need for any sediment erosion controls or?
Um, we're going to have.
The outlet of the, of the, of the pipe or not?
Yeah, I, I mean, essentially we're going to, we're going to end up creating just like a small little plunge pool right there. Right at the outlet of the pipe, due to all the devastation that's kind of happened in that area, we're, we're kind of in, you know, it's all torn up. There's a lot of large materials, so hopefully we can just kind of incorporate the new topography into that. And this way we touch as little as possible. But yeah, so, so right now we're, we're in front of you to make the determination of if you want public or not public hearing.
Well, my take is that obviously what happened is, is a wetlands violation. Therefore, I think, I think that we should issue a notice, notice of violation in order to correct to the town and they proceed. And no public hearing is necessary because it was a violation or telling to correct it as, as provided.
Who's the violator?
The borough or the, the town of Monroe. It's town property, correct?
Yes, town open space.
But doesn't a violation, doesn't a violation insinuate that somebody created that violation?
They created, they created it by, by allowing, by having a, a, the significant erosion and the, and the breach of the dam.
I, I mean.
Not going to penalize them. We're, we're basically saying it's a violation. You have to correct it and correct it immediately. I mean, either that or we take, we take two, three months to do it and it is 120 days. You end up with the same.
If we, if we do.
Act on the FEMA funding potentially in any way?
Having a violation?
We did this for several people who lost their driveways.
Right. As a matter of fact, downstream from this is one of the agent approvals that I had given for an emergency, but in this case, if you just did it as a regular hearing, you don't need to do a violation to it. I mean, there's.
That's up to you guys.
That's up to you guys.
A, a regular hearing does, I mean, to be honest, either way, it truly doesn't bother me because by the time I get the funding situated and get, choose a contractor, all that, it's, I, I think it's going to be irrelevant either way. So I'm, I'm personally comfortable either way. But it could just be a regular hearing as well and be pushed out another month for a vote and that's fine. Or, or actually two weeks is the next meeting when you could make a decision on it. So.
If, I mean, if, if timing works for you.
Let's first see, is there anybody that thinks this needs to be a public hearing? Because we need to at least acknowledge that.
Yeah.
Does anybody here want to recommend a public hearing?
I don't, I don't think so, not for this one. I don't think it's that massive of the significant impact. And I don't think the, there's a big outcry from the public for this.
I mean, you are in contact with the immediate neighbors already, so I think this is a big surprise.
Yeah, he had said to me that 70 Huntingtown is already, you know, up in arms or, you know, there was difficulty, but it's a good neighborhood and they know it has to be done. I'm like Commissioner Stewart, I feel like we want to just do it as expediently as possible. I feel like you've got some good, good engineering in place. I think we just want to go forward. However, you know, to facilitate, James, we don't want to stand in his way. We want to get the work to progress, so.
I think we can probably wrap this up in the next meeting then.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, if you were lowering the elevation of the water, then there might be public interest, but you're just repairing it. I don't see.
All right. So then we need to make a motion to make.
Motion to move to a regular, regular.
Regular hearing? And that could be on February 26th at our next meeting.
So motion by Commissioner Stewart to turn this into a regular hearing.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any others? We'll have another next one.
Thanks, James. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Thanks, James.
Yeah, yep.
All right. Moving on, we have a regular meeting. Public hearings, um, to deliberate. All right, so moving on to, um, filings. IWC 2018-7, file number 1145205 Monroe Turnpike, proposal to release $15,000 bond.
So this, uh, this bond request, the portion of 20 of 205 Monroe Turnpike is, was associated with the self-storage facility. That piece of the project has been sold and the new owner has posted a bond of $16,550, reflecting the updated amount for the applicant, for the previous application. A $15,000 bond remains on file with the town. And since the new bond has been posted for a higher amount, we have no objection to releasing the bond.
Motion to release the $15,000 bond.
Second.
Motion to release by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor? All right.
All right.
Okay.
I didn't. True.
All right, so it's unanimous. All right. Moving on to, uh, IWC 2025. uh, IWC twenty twenty-two dash O six, file number one, four, one, zero, fifty-three Whispering Pine Road. Proposal to Release Ten Thousand Dollar Bond.
Um, in twenty fifteen, a ten thousand dollar bond was posted for IWC twenty fifteen dash fifteen. Um, during the final inspection, it was noted that there were three items that needed to be corrected. I'm not sure why, but the previous uh, the previous administration, they issued a new permit, which was IWC twenty twenty-two dash O six for the additional work that needed to be done to correct. And they wound up holding the bond over until all conditions of the, of both approvals were met. Not sure why they did that, but they were holding the, the bond. I made a site visit and all the conditions of both approvals have been met. So we have no objection to releasing that bond either.
What was that original application for?
Uh, it was a barn. Uh, it was the construction of a barn which uh, required fill.
You had an, an issue with the grading, wasn't there an issue?
It was an issue with the grading and the uh, location of the plants that they had planted. They had planted the plants on top of the slope and made the slope too steep. So they were told to make the slope more gradual and move all those plants down to the bottom. Uh, the original, the original permit also had to do with a pool, the installation of a pool, which was on another side of the property, but it was all part of the same thing. I was out there uh, before winter, uh, evaluated all the plants. They're all in good condition and they're all there.
We have a motion.
Motion to release the bond.
A second?
Second. Motion to release the bond by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any others? Okay. Alright, moving on to uh, agent approvals, agent activity report.
Uh, so IAA twenty twenty-five dash uh, O two, file number fifteen seventeen is one oh one Lynn Drive. It was a permit for a detached two-car garage with an in-ground stormwater management system. The back of the barn, uh, all, all disruption to the soils would be fifty feet outside of the mapped wetlands. So we did delineate the wetlands. And any ground disturbance is fifty feet away. I issued them an agent approval. Conditions of the approval were to install, you know, silt fence, have the silt fence inspected before construction and put up the uh, the wetland markers. And I issued them the, an agent approval on that. Thank you. And then I just wanted to update you on all the uh, violations that I've been working on. Um, IWV twenty twenty-four dash O three, file number fourteen ninety-five sixty-eight East Village Road. Uh, if you remember, uh, the, the property owner was here. He was supposed to be here tonight, had some family emergencies. He will be here uh, at the next meeting. But the applicant had issued a, he'd been issued a permit for a curb cut, if you remember. Uh, but he went further into the property and into what is potential wetlands. He had the property, the property delineated.
Cliff.
Yes.
Kuzio.
Yep, Cliff Kuzio. Uh, and like I said, he was going to be here. Um, and the family emergency held him away. So, uh, but he did get the property delineated. So we now know where those wetlands are.
That property for sale? Wasn't there something about that?
That property is, is listed for sale, yes. Um, I'd like to just let the, the commission know that the complaintant um, has been calling and would like, uh, is wondering why this, his original complaint was from April, April twenty-ninth and why nothing has been done today. And I did explain to him that it is a process and he had to get the property delineated and that takes time and but I just want all commissioners to know that uh, you know, he, he, he's calling and asking.
So it's been ten months and.
Yeah, and still nothing's been done. Now, um, speaking with Cliff Kuzio, he did put together a plan of what he wants to do. If you'll remember, we gave him three options. To leave the, leave the gravel and, and that parking area the way it is. Or to present us with what he wanted to do in the first place, which is put a road in to a, uh, to a garage, to a separate garage. Which is what he's going to present to us.
Right.
He's, he's uh.
This is taking quite some time.
Yep.
So I mean, it's time to get this moving along. I mean, ten months is kind of.
Well, you could let him know when he's here at the next meeting. Uh, he, he wasn't able to make this meeting. He will make the next meeting is what he said. And he'll have, you know, a plan of what he wants to do. And you'll look at the plan and you'll advise him.
Great. You have to do. I have debates. So if you're going to do multiple debates as well?
Oh, it was.
I think I doubled it.
If you have any commentary, specific.